Good morning, everyone. It's October 2nd and we're starting our planning board meeting this morning. I have Commissioners Hedrick and Lyndon virtual this morning, so we do have a quorum, the three of us here. The first item is adoption of resolutions. We have one this morning, Friendship Parcel 210 Ridgewells Catering Preliminary Plan, MCPB number 25076. Do I have a motion for approval of this resolution?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. The ayes have it, 3-0. Next, we'll go to regulatory extension requests. We'll start with the last two, Primrose at 616-550-Georgia Avenue, Preliminary Plan Extension Request, number four, and where staff is recommending approval of the extension, and Seneca Meadows Preliminary Plan Amendment, Site Plan Amendment, and Forest Conservation Plan Extension Request, number one. Do I have a motion for approval of these two extension requests?
Move to approve the extension requests.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, 3-0. Now, we'll go back to the first one, which is a little bit unusual, and this is the National Park Seminary Preliminary Plan, Site Plan and Forest Conservation Plan Extension Request, number four. A bit unique, and so I'll have Elza Heisel-McCoy go through this with us to explain it, so we're all on board for this request. Thank you.
Good morning, thank you Chair. For the record, Elza Heisel-McCoy, Chief of West County Planning. So, as the Chair said, we have extension requests for the National Park Seminary Preliminary Plan, Site Plan, and Forest Conservation Plan. This is extension request number four. This project has been in with us. As it was originally submitted in intake in 2019, wasn't accepted, is complete until 2023, and the Board has extended the review until the end of the month. There are a number of outstanding issues with the proposal. Many of the DRC comments provided in April of 2023 have not been addressed, and so the staff recommendation in the posted report is to deny the extension requests. The project has, so since the project has been in, and this makes it even more unique, both the APF validity period and the preliminary plan validity period have expired. And so, under the code, if not extended or reinstated, that would render the preliminary plan, the current preliminary plan approval they're seeking to amend, void, and then they wouldn't be able to move forward with a forest conservation plan or a site plan because those are predicated on that preliminary plan. So, we've had discussions since with the applicant and his representative, and I think we've found a path forward, and I think Mr. Rosavi and Ms. Rosenfeld would like to say a few words, and then we have a recommendation.
Thank you so much for that explanation, Mr. Heisel-McCoy. Why don't we start with Mr. Mike Rosavi? Are you, you're the applicant.
I'm the civil engineer for, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, please, please provide your testimony, sir.
My name is Mike Rosavi, civil engineer with Rastek Associates, representing the applicant, and I just have some prepared statements that I would like to state. We are basically here to ask for an extension to finish our project. It's been a complicated project because there are three applicants, applications being worked on concurrently, including a site plan, preliminary plan amendment, and forest conservation plan amendment, and as staff has stated, the preliminary plan previously approved has also expired, which needs to be reinstated and extended. The site is heavily environmentally sensitive and intensive and is part of a historic easement site. The project is 100% residential, where eight townhouses, 14 condo apartment units, and refurbishment of a historic structure to be used as a detached residential unit are proposed. The project is supported by the Save Our Seminary organization. They support preservation of the site and history of the site. We've spoken, I've prepared the statement saying staff has provided an opportunity to reinstate and extend the preliminary plan, which we've already covered. At this time, we just want to better understand what the shortcomings of the latest resubmission on August 2025 are specifically related to the tree variance, stream buffer submitted, and submitted plans and documents. The previous submission addressed comments that were received on June 12, 2025 by email from staff. We propose to meet with staff and ascertain what is needed to obtain approval, and in terms of the requested extension, the reason for that is because of the complicated nature of the project and tasks involved. As we all know, staff needs to work on a report 65 days after final submission, which is right there equal to two months, and therefore with the meetings required with the various parts of the project that need to be resolved, and other approvals from other county agencies, including DPS, Stormwater Management, Fire and Rescue, that's the basis for the extension requested.
Well, thank you so much. Next, I believe you have your attorney online, Ms. Rosenfeld. Do you have some?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just supplement the remarks that Mr. Rosavi made with a little bit of additional background information. The applicant in this case owns the property. He has purchased the property. I know that you all are familiar with the National Park Seminary project, generally with that development generally. It is, it is very challenged in terms of both the historic preservation restrictions, environmental sensitivity areas, and there are other complicating factors with existing utility easements. It's a very difficult site to work with, and in particular when you're working with such a relatively small project with a few, with few units. I think that the applicant has been moving forward in good faith, as you can see from the timeline attached to the extension request itself. There has been a lot of work related to areas that don't directly respond to staff requests in the sense that there's a lot going on in the background that staff might not be aware of, coordinating with the Maryland Historic Trust, for example, and some of the other, other utilities. So, I appreciate that this has been outstanding for a couple of years since the application was accepted. On the other hand, there really is no prejudice to anybody except the applicant to deny, to deny this project. We're not holding up other developments. We're not holding up other projects, and so to deny the extension request at this point in time and require the applicant to provide a whole new submission with all new fees, and essentially which would require a whole new staff level of review from the very, very beginning of a project, just doesn't seem to me like it serves anybody's interest, particularly given the fact that we are so far along at this point in the development review process. I don't believe that we've received any comments on the last submission. I believe that at that point, Mr. Rosavi was advised that the application simply would be recommended for denial, but I think in the interest of equity and recognizing that the property owner really has invested an incredible amount of time and money to try and move this project forward, I, I would ask that you please do grant the extension request and any reinstatement requests through, through May of 2026. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Maybe I'll take it back to staff and get their thoughts on potential next steps.
Sure. So, while I'm not sure staff would concur with Ms. Rosenfeld's assessment of, of where we are, I think what staff is recommending is to extend the three plans through the end of this calendar year to allow the applicant to modify their current application, to reinstate and extend the validity period for the preliminary plan. What's required for that is really just to provide a statement of justification, update the notice signs on the site, and then renotice all of the folks on the notice list that the preliminary plan amendment has been expanded to include those elements. What we'd like to do is, at that time, when we come back in December, with the, for the Board to decide on the, on the request to reinstate and extend the preliminary plan validity period, is to be able to demonstrate, as Mr. Rosavi said, you know, we will work very closely, as closely as, as needed to help make progress on this application. We'd like to come back in December and demonstrate that progress to show that there is significant forward motion, and, and then in December, if significant progress has been shown, then to extend it, you know, further to allow that process to finish. It may need more time than May of 26, and we'd like to come back with sort of a more informed update in December. So, that's the staff recommendation.
Okay. So, given staff's recommendation, Mr. Rosavi and Ms. Rosenfeld, would you accept staff's recommendation?
From my end, as the civil engineer, I accept that, and will work out the details with staff.
And I just have a question for clarification. What, where does that leave the status of the site plan and the forest conservation plan?
So, the, the staff recommendation is to recommend extension of all three applications because they have to be taken together, and as, as I said before, without a valid preliminary plan, the, the other two cannot be, cannot move forward.
Okay.
The goal would be by the end of the year to have everybody, everybody street legal and ready to roll, and then we can see how far we need to extend it to, to finish.
I, I think that's a very practical approach, and like Mr. Rosavi, I, that would be acceptable. Thank you.
So, it is important that you make significant progress. If the Board agrees with this, you know, a significant progress on this project, while it may, it, staff, not only our staff, but all the DPS staff, county agencies, put time in when they get these projects to review them. So, it's, I, you know, it is also using staff's time, and we want to make sure that is used well. Yeah, we, we know that, that it takes time and it takes effort to do development projects, a lot of coordination, but it seems as if there have been many opportunities where the, the applicant could have moved this project forward, and we, if we need to coordinate more with you, if, you know, any, help you out, you know, with the other agencies, if there's, if you get stuck, please let staff know, and so we, but, but we need to move these projects forward. We have a housing shortage in the county. We want, we want to help you move that forward, but we don't want you spinning your wheels, nor staff and the other agencies spinning their wheels, okay?
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate that, and yes, that's what we will, how we will move forward.
Okay. To my, my fellow Board members, I, I would recommend that we, I'd move forward with staff's recommendation to have the applicant come back by December, the end of the year, December 31st, showing good faith that they have been moving this project forward, and then that, that to reinstate the project, and, and move other these applications forward that they need to do to move this project forward. I'm in favor of that, but I want to get your comments and your opinion, okay?
Yeah. I would be in favor of the staff recommendation as well to extend toward the, to the end of the year. This is a, you know, I can, I can see how the project can be challenging with the historic district and the location and everything like that, but it looks like a good, you know, reasonably good infill project, you know, inside the Beltway, relatively close to Forestland Metro. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, to let that go and make sure that we have movement on the project and do what we can do to ensure that it moves forward.
Commissioner Lyndon?
Yeah, similarly, I, I think the staff recommendation is, is reasonable at this stage. I just have, you know, a question back to, to staff about, you know, I, I imagine this is a bit of a subjective assessment, but are there sort of practical examples you can give us to help us understand in December? You know, what constitutes kind of there? From, from where we stand now, in your eyes, what would constitute a good faith effort or substantial progress to both do some of the updates that you think are needed and also demonstrate kind of responsiveness with the, the various requests that have, have come in that apparently have not been satisfied to date? Just so kind of when, you know, in December, so we have a better understanding of what are you hoping to see that would demonstrate that things are back on track and can reasonably get addressed within, you know, from that point, another five to six months or so?
So, the, there are a number of outstanding items, the, in no particular order, the, the traffic counts will need to be updated, so I think, you know, and as I was speaking with Mr. Rosavi, sort of the time to do those while school is in session is wrapping up, but I think that can still be done. So, I think, you know, showing traffic counts, I think demonstrating advances with the Maryland Historic Trust, I think would, would be good. I think addressing the, the forest, the outstanding forest conservation issues. I understand that Mr. Rosavi and his team are already working to, to get the folks ready that, that need to do that work. So, I mean, I, you know, it's, you know, the beginning of October, and I think at practical terms, this is going to be coming back to the Board at the beginning of December. So, you know, and there are a lot of pieces, so I, I think we would be looking for examples of those, of those types of things, you know, the stormwater management. I think, you know, that submittal requires some more work on other parts of the drawing. So, I think we would, you know, I, I don't know, we want to see you have to do A, B, C, D, but I think, you know, some of the letters would be, would be of use.
Good question. Commissioner Lyndon, I know it was, one was, do we say that we, the applicant will work with staff, you know, over the next two weeks to come up with, you know, some milestones that would be used for this December deadline, if that's okay with you? Okay. So, do, I have a motion to approve these extension requests for National Park Seminary Preliminary Plan Amendment, Site Plan Amendment, Forest Conservation Plan. To, given that by December, we'll say December 18th, because after that, there's a, we run up against holidays. So, December 18th, they show progress in moving the project for, in things like updated traffic counts, Maryland Historic Trust issues, and outstanding forest conservation, stormwater management, but staff will work out within the next two weeks a checklist of things that they should be moving forward on.
I'll move that we extend the three, the three plans to December 31st, 2025, and direct the staff to put together a list of milestones.
Okay, December 18th.
Oh, December 18th, sorry.
Yeah, in order to, regarding the reinstatement of the plans, okay?
Exactly. Apologies.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, 3-0. Thank you, Mr. Rosavi.
Thank you, sir.
Please, please move this project forward by December 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next, we'll have the roundtable discussion with our Planning Director, Jason Sartori. Welcome, Mr. Sartori.
Good morning, Chair Harris. You look a little lonely up there on the dais, but also good morning to Commissioners Lyndon and Hedrick virtually, and, and Baby, Baby Lyndon as well. So, I'm happy to be here this morning to, to provide my director's report, just to give a quick summary of what we plan to talk about. I'll talk a little bit about this being Community Planning Month. I'll talk about some of the things we have coming up. We'll talk about a, a new activity that we did this past week in the Planning Department, Hispanic Heritage Month, give some personnel updates, and then I'm going to turn it over to folks here with me from our Research and Strategic Projects Division to talk about a couple of things that they've been working on. So, to begin, I know it's really hard to believe, but it is October, which means that it is National Community Planning Month, and so I'd like to recognize the extraordinary value that our department staff brings to our work every single day. In this department, planning is much more than maps and models. It's about listening, adapting, it's leadership, and it's about building community. We operate at the intersection of community voices and professional best practices, and that balance is what makes our work so impactful. Community input is vital to shaping our plans, but it has to be balanced with expert analysis and established planning principles to ensure long-term viability. Good planning isn't just responsive, it's strategic, it's data-informed, and it's grounded in professional judgment, and that's what we bring to the table. And our role is really to translate community aspirations into resilient equitable outcomes. Whether it's guiding transformative development, protecting public spaces and resources, or envisioning safer streets, our team's ability to translate complex challenges into thoughtful solutions is what sets our work and the county's work apart. Every public meeting, every staff report, every zoning analysis, these are opportunities for us to build trust, foster collaboration, and to create places where people thrive. And so, I thank the Board for your dedication to planning that matters. I also invite you to read the new Third Place blog that I co-authored with Prince George's County Planning Director, Lakeisha Hall. The post goes into more detail about the value of community planning, and, and you can access it by scanning the QR code that you see on the screen there. So, I suggest that we continue to celebrate the work we do and the communities we serve, not just this month, but every month. But while we're focusing on this month, we'll take a look at what we have coming up. That gives us an opportunity to celebrate community planning. The first you see here, we have our semi-annual next Tuesday with the County Council. This gives us an opportunity to give the Council an update on what we've been up to for the past six months. Always look forward to having that conversation with the Council. And then we've got two other events that really celebrate some core functions that we have here in the, in the department. The first one is the Celebrate Design Event. This is our bi-annual Design Excellence Awards Ceremony. You may recall the last couple of times that we've hosted this, we've done it here in our building. Well, this year, it's at the Marriott International Headquarters in Bethesda, and we look forward to seeing Board members at this event. It's, it's a great, great event that brings out people from the community, other, it brings out elected officials, and it brings out people from other, representatives from other county agencies, and of course, development interests, and it's a great opportunity to kind of celebrate with, with all of them, some of the great design projects that we have in the county. A week after that, following a board meeting, we have the Community Planning Academy graduation here at Wheaton Headquarters. And as you know, the Community Planning Academy, this will be a big focus of my presentation to the Council next week. This has been something that we've been really proud of, and we're really proud of the 50 people who participated in our summer cohort, our beta cohort, that helped us test out the system, and we'll be celebrating them, and with a graduation ceremony on the 23rd. So, we invite you to, to attend and join us for that as well. Earlier this week, we kicked off something new here at the department. The Innovation Lab is a cross-divisional initiative that was launched by the Environment and Climate Division, the Design, Placemaking, and Policy Division, and the Transportation Division, and it was intended to spark collaboration and creativity across the Planning Department. Its mission is to tackle shared challenges, pioneer forward-thinking solutions, and break down siloed workflows through hands-on ideation and teamwork. During the lab's kickoff, staff formed interdisciplinary teams to develop and pitch project ideas that advanced environmental, design, and transportation goals. One winning concept will be selected for development over the next 90-day period, with that, with the potential that it would be presented to the Board. The ideas that were generated were wide-ranging, some were smaller, some were that can easily be implemented, some were much more complex, where it would really be a scope of work that would be for a potential project added to our work program. The, and, and the, the idea of the Innovation Lab, it's much more than a workshop. It's a launchpad for bold ideas and meaningful impact. And as you know, innovation is one of the five priorities that we have in our strategic plan, and so it was great to see these teams take the initiative to, to really, to, to go all in on the, the idea of this, and I wanted to thank Christina Sorrento, Tul Sharma, and Dave Onspacher, and also Emily Ballmer for making this happen. Once again, Montgomery County, Montgomery Planning is also proud to have a team of planners here that reflect Montgomery County's rich multiculturalism, and as part of National Hispanic Heritage Month, our Third Place blog is highlighting some of our planners working to craft a better future for a diverse Montgomery County. I shared previously a piece that we ran on Emma Perez. Well, today, I want to highlight Justine Gonzalez-Velez, who is one of our transportation planners here. He was inspired to pursue planning after witnessing the devastation of Hurricane Maria in his hometown in Puerto Rico. The storm exposed the dangers of poor infrastructure and planning, especially in underserved communities. Growing up in a rural area with limited mobility options, Justine developed a passion for equity and accessibility. for equity and accessibility. Today, he works to ensure new development supports safe, inclusive transportation for all. As a Spanish-speaking planner, he also helps empower Hispanic residents to engage in the planning process, ensuring their voices are heard and valued. He's a great ambassador of our department to the Spanish-speaking population, as he often participates in our community meetings and events. So please help share Justine's story by visiting the blog post by scanning the QR code that you see on this screen. And I have one personnel update to share. Vanshita Shahou is a new intern in the Management Services Division. She is an international student from India and a graduate student in industrial organizational psychology at UMBC. She completed her bachelor's degree in clinical psychology before moving to the U.S. to pursue her passion for workplace psychology. She's HR's new training and organizational development intern. So welcome, Vanshita. And with that, I'm now going to pass the mic to members of our Research and Strategic Projects Division. First, to Chris McGovern, who will highlight an extensive effort to make information and resources easily available to the community. And then James Lee will provide an overview of the latest Census ACS data on Montgomery County.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Chris McGovern. I'm the GS manager in the Research Strategic Projects Division. There we go. So I'm basically here to demo for you a new application that we created, the GS team created. It's the Master Plan Inventory. We were, we were recently asked to research when, with the creation of an Emery Grove Urban Renewal District at one point, near Greg Gaethersburg. And so we started going back through the, the master plans, and, and I, I ran into a dead end. In order to get back into the 60s when this was created, we only mapped out, like in 15 years ago, our, we mapped out master plans, going back to roughly 2000, in order to come up with the entire countywide as amended map. We didn't have to go back further than that to do so. But in, in going back through the master plans, you, it's like deed research. Each one kind of references the one prior that it amends. So I was able to go back and, and find it. But in the process, we discovered that when we moved here to Wheaton, we had scanned a lot of documents, including all of the master plan books that we had in our library. And these go back to 5960s, a lot more than what we had digitized. So my team, the GS members, we fit in a little bit of a slow-cooking project to map out each one of these things, and put all these PDF documents, which are character recognizable, online, and make them available. So, let me go into that a little. There we go. So, where's my cursor? Oh, there it is. Apologize, my mouse is a little flirty over here. I don't know. So this is the app. What I wanted to show, though, was how we worked with the comms team to host it, to get it listed on the Montgomery Plans, planning.org page. And so this is the GIS and interactive map section. And at the very bottom of that is this entry here. Mouse is a little body here. Anyway, it's this little guy here at the bottom, Master Plan Inventory. And so, let me just go back into the app here. Boom. So you see here, this is the boundary of the map is, is showing the newly, the 2025 Planning Division reorganization boundaries. And here you see all, a tabular list of all of these master plans. And so if you click any one of them, you see that it shows the cover of that particular master plan. And if you click on that cover, it will open that PDF of that master plan as well. Now, ooh. So one of the things I wanted to showcase here was like, how this, this is going to help answer some of the, the ability for us to do backwards research. And so like, for instance, if I click this little, if, if I was in the area of where that urban renewal district was, I would then be able to click this map in, in a location, and it will filter this list of map of plans that are applicable in that specific location. And so, you know, you can click the boundaries of one of these things. And one of the things I wanted to highlight here is that this is, aside from being able to drill down and find all the applicable plans in a bit location, we've decided to add functional plans. So here you can see the Complete Streets Design Guidelines, Pedestrian Master Plan, which are countywide, you know, so those will always appear no matter where you go. But one of the other points about this, though, simply, is that, you know, it's one thing to, we wanted to get this stuff online for everybody, it was a massive amount. We added about 100 master plans going back to the 60s there. So there's a lot of documents. I think it's good that, you know, make it accessible to the public. I also am very interested and enjoy clicking on these, these various master plan bound covers and seeing the stylistic decisions they made over time. Some of them are pretty bizarre. But lastly, I just wanted to point out that we're also working on, this is, aside from making this, this stuff available on, to the public, it, the data itself is going to, is a foundation towards our, an application we're building for the front counter, such that many, anybody would be able to pull a list of information about any location that they wanted to. And it would include all the SMAs, all the master plans that are applicable, all the functional plans that are applicable, and any other changes like that, zoning, et cetera. So this is going to help with that as well. So that's it. Back to you, James.
All right. For the record, I am James Lee, a forecaster and demographic research specialist. Good morning, members of the planning board. So today, I will give an overview of the 2024 American Community Survey data published in the Planning Department's blog, The Third Place, to highlight key demographic and housing statistics for Montgomery County, as well as Maryland and the United States, to provide additional context and comparisons. So first of all, what is the American Community Survey? The, the ACS, the American Community Survey, it's an annual survey of 3.5 million households, conducted by the Census Bureau, with detailed demographic and housing data published in one-year and five-year data sets. The Census Bureau released the 2024 ACS one-year estimates on September 11th, a few weeks ago. Much of the demographic data used by the Planning Department for analysis come from the ACS. Montgomery County had 1.082 million residents in 2024, and continued to be Maryland's most populous county with 17% of the state's population. So since 2020, the county has added more than 20,000 people, for a growth rate of 1.9%, highlighted in, in red here. This was higher than the state's growth rate, but lower than the nation's. The county's median age was 40.6 years, slightly older than the state or the nation. And while the age distribution for the county, Maryland and the United States, look pretty similar, the county had a slightly higher percentage of children under 18, with about 23%, and residents ages 45 to 64%, with 26%. But a smaller percentage of young adults, ages 18 to 34, with 20%. The county continues to be a racially diverse place. Non-Hispanic whites were the largest group, with 38% of residents, followed by Hispanics with 22%. So overall, 62% of county residents were people of color, which is highlighted here, this group in red. So again, 62% for Montgomery County, and that percentage is higher than the state, which is at 55%, and for na, for the overall nation at 44%. The county is also highly educated, with 61% of residents ages 25 and over, having a bachelor's degree or higher. This group circled in red. And a majority of this group alone has had an advanced degree. Statewide and nationally, the lower percentages of people with a bachelor's degree or higher are partly due to a much smaller share of people with an advanced degree. Related to its high levels of education, the county also continues to be wealthy. Its median household income of about $140,000, while exceeded the statewide and national medians. Nearly half of the county's households, 47%, earn $150,000 or more. This group circled in red. But 48% of households statewide, and 59% of households nationally, earn less The county's diverse housing stock includes 408,000-plus units, with 46% as single-family detached houses, 18% as single-family attached houses, and 21% in multi, in, pardon me, in larger multifamily structures. Statewide and nationally, the majority of housing units were single-family detached homes, with much smaller percentages of units in larger multifamily structures. Also, the county's homeownership rate of 65% tracks closely to the county's percentage of single-family homes. The statewide homeownership rate was about 68%, and nationally, 65%, same as the county. Related to the county's overall greater income, its housing values were also much higher than the state or nation. The county's median home value of $660,000 for owner-occupied units was much higher than the statewide or national medians. 21% of the county's units were valued at $1 million or more, circled in red, compared to less than 10% statewide or nationally. About 30% of the units in the county were valued under $500,000, in this second red box, again, 30%. But the majority of units statewide and nationally fell into this category. Statewide, it was 61%, nationally, it was 68%. The county's median monthly gross rent of nearly $2,100 was higher than the statewide or national medians. 55% of the county's renters paid $2,000 or above for monthly housing costs, highlighted here in the red box, compared to only 33% statewide and 27% nationally. Only 16% of renters in the county paid less than $1,500, in this second red box. So again, 16% under $1,500. But this figure was 37% statewide and 50% nationwide. In addition, 47% of renters in the county experienced a housing cost burden, which is defined as spending 30% or more of a household's income on housing. At the state and national levels, the percentage is actually 52% of renters. As we wrap up, here are some key takeaways. Montgomery County is racially diverse, highly educated, and wealthy compared to the, the state and national population. The county also has a diverse housing stock, but much higher home values and housing costs than the state or the nation. Looking ahead, the Census Bureau will release the 2024 ACS five-year estimates in December, according to their schedule. And this is when detailed data will be available for small geographies, such as Census Trax. And please check out the Third Place blog for more information about the information presented today. This QR code does link to the blog article itself. And thank you. And we can take any questions you may have.
Well, let me just start by saying thank you for this wealth of information. You're always have a reputation for diving into the data and making sense of it. So we appreciate that. Love the, the research you've done, the catalog called The Master Plans. I mean, it seemed like a lot of work, but so, so useful, as people want to ask questions about what happened in the past and compare it to about what's in the present. The Innovation Lab, what, you know, that's really cutting-edge, and I can't, can't wait to see what projects are, you know, going to come out of that, you know, the, the top two or three, and then the one that's selected, and the Third Place blogs, you know, it's really great that you can document, and people can go online, and, you know, really, really see the value of, of the Planning Department, what we do for the county, and, and it's apropos that it's Community Planning Month. So thank you so much. Any of my fellow commissioners have any comments, questions?
Oh, not, not, not really. I just, I really enjoyed the presentation on the data from the ACS this year, and I think the Third Place blog post was also very good. So thanks for presenting that. I think it shows us, you know, sort of what we've been, what we've been seeing, in that we have some, some diversity in our housing, but we have extremely high, high prices. And it's something we need to, you know, we're, we're working to address with, with housing supply and our master plans and everything like that. So I just want to say thanks. It was a good presentation. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Similarly, this is always super interesting, this time of year, to, to get this data refreshed, and, and, and start to kind of, over time, as we get this year-over-year, understand some of the trends that are going on. I mean, we could spend a lot of time talking about any one of these categories, and what it implies, and how they relate to each other. But just one thing that really stands out, and this has been, you know, this, this, it's been sort of accelerating in this direction, of course, recently, but it looks like basically 70% of, of, of homes in Montgomery County have a value of over half a million dollars. This is from the Third Place blog. 20%, nearly 21%, have a value of over a million dollars. And, you know, it's, we, we know that this has been getting, you know, just comparing that to Maryland and the United States as a whole, I mean, it's, 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 it's striking. And there are reasons for this. And as, as Commissioner Hendrick mentioned, it's directly informing a lot of the work we do, a lot of our recommendations to try to address this reality. And it is a reality. It's, it's in the data. It's what people experience every day. And, you know, we, we can't really, we can't really, you know, overstate how impactful this is. And I think that this particular data point, and its comparison to the rest of the state of Maryland, and, and really the, you know, the region in, in large, in large measure, is something that, you know, we just continue to, to need to talk about and, and make sure that we address it in our recommendations. But yeah, thanks for, for the presentation. It'll be interesting, maybe next year, to also just get a little bit of, of kind of summary of maybe some of the trends in some of these areas, some comparison to either, dear, because it is one-year estimates instead of five, or maybe just a five or 10-year view, to kind of contextualize some of these things, too. But yeah, I love, love the presentation, and thanks for, for doing the work and diving into the data.
Yeah. And thanks for bringing it out, Commissioner Linden. And I know staff is doing an upcoming Housing Preferences and Needs Study. So based on these, where the cost of housing is today, or, or because of our demographics, what housing do we really need? And at what price points to meet the needs of our residents? So all great work. Thanks for pointing all this out.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to take a one-minute break, and then start with our next item, item number five, A to Z Fund Care/Daycare, conditional use where staff is recommending transmitting comments to the Montgomery County Hearing, Hearing Examiner. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. We're on item number five, A to Z Fund Care Daycare Conditional Use, number CU 202509, where staff is recommending transmitting comments to the Montgomery County Hearing Examiner. And this morning, we have Tamika Graham from the Planning Department presenting this item. Welcome, Ms. Graham.
Good morning. Thank you so much, just again, for the record, my name is Tamika Graham, and I'm presenting this application on behalf of the East County Division that reviewed this case. This is an important application, as you know, because many of our master plans recognize the need for childcare across the county to keep up with our growing population. So staff recommends approval with conditions of A to Z Fund Care Conditional Use. We're asking the board to transmit a recommendation of approval to the Hearing Examiner at the Office of Zoning and Administrative Hearings. The subject property is located at 6030 Grosner Lane in the North Bethesda area. You can see here, it's the property in the center, it's surrounded by primarily residential uses that are in the R60 and R90 zones, but it does have some commercial, civic, and institutional uses. Immediately to the north of the property is the Wildwood Manor Shopping Center, which is in the CRT zone. And further northwest, west off of Old Georgetown Road, you can see Walter Johnson High School is nearby, and then there's also the Ashburton Elementary School to the west. These surrounding uses really make the daycare an ideal use and activity at all these intersecting roads. So what you can also see on our vicinity map is that staff identified a neighborhood boundary, and within this boundary, there are 34 other properties, not including the subject application, that have had conditional use applications. Specifically for the subject property, there were two prior conditional use approvals to permit a charitable use in a group residential facility for persons with disabilities. There are seven other properties for approved childcare at various capacities, and you can see in the legend, we just tried to define them by the number of persons that were approved. But I do want to point out that this is a past snapshot of approval, so it doesn't reflect any approvals that were later extinguished by the property owner, and it also doesn't truly represent our current zoning landscape, because daycares with up to 12 children and also accessory apartments no longer require conditional uses. So if we were to pull some of those away, we would have a different map. So just bringing you in closer to the subject property, it's located in the 1992 North Bethesda Garrett Park master plan area. It is in the R60 zone. It has 4.2 acres, and it has two existing buildings. So the cornerstone Montgomery building that you can see here, it's located, operates the charitable use and the group housing for persons with disabilities. They are not a party in this application, so we're looking specifically at the area outlined in blue, which is what we're calling the site. It's the St. Luke's Episcopal Church, and again, it's addressed at 6030 Grosner Lane. The church has, it's a two-story building, and it backs up to Old Georgetown Road, and it's separated, as you can see really well in this aerial, separated from the roadway by dense trees. There's an off-street parking lot that's shared by both buildings. So moving into the proposal, the applicant is requesting approval for the operation of a 4,353-square-foot daycare center within the existing lower level of the church, and the applicant did receive authorization from the church to file this application. So the daycare would serve up to 70 children, ages six and eight, between the ages of six weeks and six years old. They're also anticipating up to 20 administrative staff and teachers to be on-site at any one time. There are three entrances to the church building. What you can see, actually, on, so there's a front, a side, and a rear. The daycare will utilize the rear entrance, which is shown on this top-left photo. During the weekdays, church staff can use a side entrance when the daycare is open. This is shown on the top-right photo. The site also has an existing outdoor play area, shown on the bottom-left photo, and it also has a garden and a labyrinth, which are shown on the bottom right. And you can see that all three of these elements are hidden from traffic and also protected from traffic along Old Georgetown Road. So the proposal does not include an expansion of square footage, it doesn't include any exterior building modifications. There are two physical changes that are anticipated, and that's simply with the installation of two monuments signs for the daycare. And you can see, one is at the entrance of Southport Drive, and the other would be along Old Georgetown Road. As I mentioned, the proposal would be utilizing the basement floor of the basement, so this is the floor plan. The applicant would be utilizing the existing teaching rooms. So existing access is off of Southport Drive via a private drive. There are various uses that have different operating hours when they share this parking lot. So the daycare is proposing to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The church staff coming in during the weekdays would come in a little bit later at 9:00 and then depart a little bit earlier than the daycare at 3:00. Church services currently occur on Saturdays and Sundays. And then the second building, Cornerstone Montgomery, operates during the weekdays, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so for the new use proposed, 32, there are a total of 13 parking spaces that are required for the daycare, and 32 are existing in the rear of the church parking lot on the bottom-left photo. And according to the applicant's drop-off and pick-off, pickups, excuse me, students would arrive and depart in staggered patterns during the peak hours. This proposal is subject to the growth in infrastructure policy. Our Transportation Division did review the applicant's, review and approve applicant's transportation adequacy form. The proposed daycare is expected to generate fewer than 50 net new vehicle trips during either the weekday morning or evening peak hours, so no further traffic study is required for this proposal. But a recalculation of parking is required whenever there's a change of use. There are 76 spaces on the site in the shared lot, but under the current parking table with all four uses, the property requires 103 spaces. So the applicant is requesting a parking waiver. We do have provisions in the zoning ordinance to waive parking if alternative design satisfies the intent to ensure that adequate parking is provided in a safe and efficient manner. The shared parking lot, as we know, talking with applicant and understanding the operations that they currently, it currently operates with excess spaces, particularly because the church services are on the weekends. I'll also note that the cornerstone Montgomery building, when that came in, it was initially approved with a parking waiver. So we already have a history that the deciding body made a prior determination that these uses, at least the church and the nonprofit, are compatible, and that they can work together, and the shared parking would be appropriate. I also want to note that during the initial hearing for Cornerstone Montgomery, that they did testify that their deli clients arrived to their site primarily by public transportation, so that really reduced the need for client parking. Most of their parking is used for staff. So due to the current conditions of the shared parking, the staggered arrivals and departures for the daycare, the variable hours of operation, and the circulation routes for each of the, for each building, staff recommends that the planning board support the requested waiver. We find that there is adequate parking that will be provided in a safe and efficient manner. There are no environmentally sensitive features on the property. The property, of course, is subject to Chapter 22A, but is exempt from the requirement to submit a forest conservation plan because it meets the requirements of an existing structure. It does not have a previously approved forest conservation plan. The applicant is not proposing to clear any of the existing trees, and there are no champion trees that will be impacted. We also examined compliance with our environmental guidelines, and it is in conformance, and the applicant is not proposing to add any new impervious surfaces. So just wrapping up here with our analysis and findings, the proposed application, it meets all of the applicable general requirements for a daycare center. It meets the intent of the North Bethesda Garrett Park Plan. That plan recognized that there would be a need for more daycares and indicated that that need would increase over the next 20 years, and so this daycare would support that recommendation to meet the needs of the residents in this area. We find that the daycare would not affect the area adversely or alter the area's predominantly residential nature, and is compatible with the surrounding uses, and there's adequate public facilities. During our review, we did not receive any public comments on this application. The applicant has met all the signage noticing and submittal requirements, and again, we just asked the planning board to support the approval of this project and to transmit your comments to the Hearing Examiner for the next and final hearing, which is in two weeks, on October 16th.
So great. Thank you for your detailed presentation. Do I have any questions or comments from my fellow board members?
None from me, other than it looks like a good project, and we need, I have three kids, and we need all the daycare we can get around here. Let's go for it.
Mr. Linden.
Yeah, no comments from me, just similarly, glad, glad to see this project come to the area. And yeah, hope that with a conditional use approval through the Hearing Examiner, hopefully that it can go forward. So yeah, thanks for bringing it forward.
Just to check with staff, there are no public testimony, and there's no one here to speak. I see a couple of people here, just if there were questions, correct? So yeah, in addition to my board members, I feel this is a wonderful project, a great co-use, compatible use of the building, of the parking area. I was just, it's just amazing that it's also, you know, when I first heard it was in the basement, I thought, oh, boy, you know, but it seems like you just come right off great, handicap accessible. So wonderful project, hopefully can get approved as quickly as possible, and a great need for daycare in the county. So hearing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion from my fellow board members to transmit comments to the Montgomery County Hearing Examiner, including the parking waiver that's required for this project?
I'll move to transmit comments to the Hearing Examiner, including the parking waiver.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you so much, thank you for bringing us this project. So we're going to take a one-minute break and then start with our next item, item number six, Just School Year 2732 Capital Improvement Program, Department of Parks, where the Department of Parks is requesting that we provide guidance to staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. We're on item number six, fiscal year twenty-seven thirty-two capital improvement program, Department of Parks, where the Parks Department is recommending that the board provide guidance to staff in finalizing the CIP fiscal year twenty-seven thirty-two. And this morning, to lead the discussion is Ron Peel with the Parks Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, I'm Ron Peel, the Capital Budget Manager for Montgomery Parks. And today, we are pleased with the opportunity to be able to present on our proposed FY twenty-seven thirty-two CIP. We have a number of slides to go through. I just wanted to emphasize at the outset that much of what we will discuss through these slides was previously provided to, or much of which was covered in the staff memo we submitted to the board last week. Again, Mr. Chairman and board members, today we have two primary objectives for this work session, one of which is to request approval of our, the request to increase SAG by one million dollars for park bonds. And the other thing is to receive planning board guidance and feedback on our proposed twenty-seven through thirty-two CIP. The capital improvement program process really is our opportunity to look over a six-year period and make strategic investments in our infrastructure and all of the amenities and physical development needs of our park system. It is really an important opportunity as we only do it every other year, and it is approved by the council on even number of years. So we really take a great effort and interest in planning strategically to make the necessary investments in this, through this process. On the off-years, council approves what is known as the amended year, but we're not here to talk about that today. Just wanted to kind of mention that as part of this presentation for information purposes. Of course, when we do our CIP, we're really talking about, you know, it's all about assets, making critical investments in our assets. Assets being, you know, tangible things that have bonding authority and have a useful life of at least fifteen years. And this is critical and important because it, you know, as we've often said, we have a, an aging park system. So having that ability to make those investments to create new assets, but also to prolong the useful life of our assets is really essential to us to be able to, to maintain our park On this slide, I just want to kind of run through sort of the development schedule, where we've been and sort of, you know, where, to where we are now. But throughout the summer, we've had, we've participated in county executive community forums or conversations, as they were called. We've had Open Town Hall this summer and received a lot of comments and, you know, categorized them and included, actually attached those in the staff memo that the planning board received last week. And we also hosted, the planning board hosted a public forum several weeks ago on September the eleventh, which we received a really good feedback on our process. And that brings us to today, this work session, where we are essentially here before the board to get, to receive your guidance and feedback on where we are. Following this, in early October, we will come back to the board. We'll go back and make those adjustments and incorporate the board's feedback and then come back in a couple of weeks to request planning board adoption of our recommended CIP. For this CIP development, this is, this is the first time since I've been a part of Montgomery Parks that we're actually requesting an increase in SAG for park bonds. We've requested a one million dollar increase from eight million dollars per year to nine million dollars per year. The Council Geo Committee took action and approved that on last week, September twenty-fifth. And this is scheduled to go before the full council on October the seventh. At that time, the council will also be considering an increase that the Council Geo Committee approved for general obligation bonds as well, which is at about twenty million dollars a year at a flat rate for the six-year CIP. The only thing I wanted to mention here is historically, Parks has received roughly five to six percent of the countywide GO, of GO, general obligation bond funds. So in our planning effort, we, you know, thought it was reasonable to have an expectation that we would, you know, could receive something along those lines in terms of the increase. And again, and the other thing, the point of emphasis is that the, for park bonds, there is an operating budget impact for the increase, for the debt service that would need to be paid on these bonds. It is a minor impact of roughly on a magnitude of eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars per year. With that, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Patrick, who's going to talk, run through a few slides at this point.
All right. Thank you very much, Ron. Good morning, Chair Harris, and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Patrick Ousoucial, Assistant Budget, CIP Budget Manager. So Program Open Space, or POS, not to be confused with my initials, which is also POS, is one of the funding sources which has been significantly impacted by a drop in allocation. So POS is administered through our state's DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and it is tied to the real estate market and real estate transactions. So in other words, it's influenced by economic conditions that affect the real estate market. What we have assumed previously in the past is a level of nine million dollars a year. And the way POS allocation is divvied up is half of it is required to go to acquisition and then the other half goes to development. So out of the half that goes to development, seventeen percent of that goes to our municipalities. And for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, we're looking at roughly an allocation of about five million dollars. We will assume a five million dollar allocation for this fiscal year, and we're hoping to avoid a potential cut in March. So in terms of PDFs that are affected, we're looking at our popular park refresher program. We're also looking at our Wheaton Regional Park. We're looking at South Germantown Regional Park Cricket Field and our Legacy Urban Space. So on the right side of the slide, we've got our allocation as it has been since FY twenty-two. So we were at nine point six million dollars. In twenty-three, we were at fourteen point six. And then in twenty-four fiscal year, we're at sixteen point two. And as I mentioned earlier, for FY twenty-five and twenty-six, we're looking at an average allocation of about five million dollars. And at the bottom is just a bar graph which shows the allocation across the years. So. All right. So our basis for recommendation for this cycle, we are hoping to build on our past success. So as you are aware, we have transitioned from larger standalone projects to smaller level of effort projects. We're also going to be following our condition assessment data. So we're looking at things like our bridge inspections and condition of our playgrounds. We're also going to be analyzing our emerging needs. So from our survey results of our residents, we can see that there's emergence of dog parks. We've got pickleball. Bachi is gaining popularity, just to mention a few. And we're also going to be focusing on maintaining what we own. And the key here is PLAR, PLAR, PLAR. We also have implementation of our master plan. So major one being our Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan. And we're looking to restore our Stream Valley Parks. So this ties in with our stewardship efforts. And finally, to address equity focus areas. All right. And our strategy for this cycle, we're hoping to maintain our level of efforts at the same funding level. So that includes our GO bonds, our park bonds, current revenue for FY thirty-one and thirty-two. We're also looking to increase funding for the following CIP initiatives. So that's GO bonds for the Action Sports Park and Henderson Community Garden at Wheaton Regional Park. GO bonds also for solar initiatives. That's the energy conservation non-local PDF. Current revenue for infrastructure, that's PLAR non-local. Current revenue for natural surface trails. The PDF is trails and natural surface. And finally, park bonds for park refreshers. So with that, I will turn it over back to our CIP manager, Ron Peel.
Thank you, Patrick. So in our CIP, just one point of emphasis is that we, we tend to keep most of our level of efforts as is. So the next series of slides I'm going to go through are ones that we want to emphasize, following along with the strategy that Patrick just outlined. We want to walk through some of the actual PDFs that are targeted for increase, just to provide a little bit more detail and information on those. First one being Wheaton Regional Park. We got a number of things going here, on here. One big thing is we're offsetting the decrease in POS bonds by increasing, asking for an increase in general obligation bonds. And that does a couple of things for us. It not only funds some of the projects that you see in the second bullet there, but it also importantly gives us the funding, necessary funding with the increases, the bumps that we have in FY twenty-seven and twenty-nine to do the Action Sports Park, which we've heard a lot about over the last couple of years. And as you see highlighted at the bottom there, that one million dollars that I just kind of talked about, for, allows us to fund restroom and water feature for public input as part of the Action Sports Park. And the next increase is current revenue increase for PLAR non-local, again, a popular PDF for us. And this is essentially kind of restores what we were trying to accomplish last year in terms of our request. So we're putting back, just requesting those funds again to bring us back to a level to really help us to stay, you know, on par with all of the infrastructure needs that we have in our aging and vast, might add, park system. There are a number of projects, for example, listed in the last bullet there, like trails and bridges, sports courts, Valley Mill, and, you know, CJ, Kevin John Regional Park Amphitheater, et cetera, as examples of projects. Okay. And, okay. Yes, thank you. Andy just pointed out that I think we glossed over and missed over something that's very important in this CIP, which is the GO bond increase for the solar initiative. This is a critical project, this funds the planning board's solar initiative, Mr. Chair and board members. And as you can see in the second bullet, the type of projects that we would be targeting through this increased funding. And just pointing to note that this funding in this PDF would be supplemented by funding in another PDF, which is in our enterprise fund PDF, which, you know, we have projects, other projects targeted, but we're also asking for, you know, an increase there to support the solar initiative in the CIP. We just talked about PLAR non-local. So yes. The, this is a current revenue increase for natural surface trails. And again, this is one where we are just restoring what we requested in the last CIP, but didn't quite get there in terms of all the funding that we were looking for. But this is a very popular and highly demanded kind of amenity in our system. So, and it's, you know, it helps us address some aging infrastructure such as bridges. And ultimately, I think we all agree that we're really aiming to continue to try to develop a world-class trail network with this, these funds. So park refreshers, this is, so we had a couple of initiatives going on here. Again, as we talked about earlier in the presentation, we're we're impacted by the POS decreases across our program. And this is, happens to be one PDF where we're feeling that impact. And so to, we're requesting a increase with the park bond SAG increase that we, you know, have gotten approval from the Geo Committee on, to partially offset the decrease that we're seeing in POS. And park refreshers is really, like Pilar, is really an important PDF in our CIP, because it really allows us, as you can see, the numerous of projects in that second bullet that we have going on and future projects that we would like to do as part of this program. And so this is, this is like a, you know, a corner, one of the cornerstones of our overall CIP strategy to increase park bonds for park refreshers. This slide here, as you recall, several, a couple of years ago, the planning board actually approved by action the transfer of Park Roads, the Park Roads PDF or funding, I should say, from the, for the Park Roads PDF back to parks. And that sort of set in motion other work that needed to be done, i.e. we needed to get the MOU finalized and just some of the finer points of that, details of how that was going to work and, you know, the split of the funding and so forth. So we've gotten that, to that point, and we're ready to actually execute on this to finally transfer out. And the way this is going to work is that we're going to create a separate or new PDF called Parkway Improvements, which will transfer funding into the Parkway Improvements PDF in Parks CIP, while Montgomery DOT is maintaining a portion of the funding to continue with bridge work. And the point of emphasis is that this is a zero impact to overall county geo bond SAG, as it is not new funding, it's just shifting funding from one department into another department's CIP. So one other thing we wanted to mention, we have a number of grants that we're actually requesting appropriation for in the CIP, all of which would hit in FY twenty-seven. Numerous grants, I won't kind of mention all of them, but you can see that most of the federal grants that we're appropriating in FY twenty-seven. So when you look at our overall CIP spread by fiscal year, you will notice a larger portion of FY twenty-seven, and that's due to the grants that we're attempting to appropriate through the CIP. Some other changes noted at the bottom here are, excuse me, the enterprise PDF. Again, we're adding some additional allocation there for, not only to continue with other enterprise projects, but also to supplement our solar initiative, as we previously mentioned. And the Small Grants and Donor Assisted CIP Second Bullet PDF. We're reducing allocation there because we have built up appropriation in that PDF over years. And this is appropriation related to donations that come to the parks system. And we're just kind of right sizing the appropriation by reducing appropriation down and leaving a small amount left in that PDF. Stream Protection PDF, here we're adding water quality bonds for new Department of DEP projects. And lastly, Legacy Urban Space, we're reducing allocation there due to the, again, to the POS reduction that we've experienced over the last couple of years. So the next couple of slides are the handouts that Patrick actually provided to you, Mr. Chair, here. And then I think Catherine Correll emailed the other board members. And these are just, you know, by PDF, we're showing the actions that are being taken that are, you know, correspond to the key over there, color coded for increases in bond funds, current revenue, adjustment to PDFs in and out, you know, up and down. And so it's for your perusal and review. And certainly if you have any questions of us, we're certainly here and willing to respond to those. And this is the one by Fund Source. The document you have has it all on one page, so we had to break it up into two slides here. I'm going to hand it back over to Patrick, who's going to talk through this chart here.
All right. Thank you, Ron. So I'd like to draw our attention to what our implementation currently looks like and what it has looked like in the past. But I need to start by saying that we don't yet have official data for FY twenty-five. However, we do believe that the data that is represented and depicted here will be representative of the actuals when they are released by a CAS team in the fall, late in the fall. So here we have eight years' worth of data, beginning in FY eighteen. And you can see that the green bars represent acquisition. Development is highlighted in the burgundy. We have a total bar which indicates the sum of the two. And then we have trend lines, which are two-year averages. So the picture here is that you do see fluctuations in acquisition. But overall, the positive, overall, there's a positive trend in development, even though we do see a slight dip in FY twenty-one due to COVID. The bottom line is that we are on upward trajectory with development, as you can see, with the trend line. And so this leads me into projects that we currently have in construction. So we have about approximately twenty-five million dollars worth of projects that are currently in construction. Our Saddle Brook Park Police Headquarters. We have Overd Hazen Wells Regional Park, which is a big expansion in Carousel. We have two projects going on at Fairland Regional Park. Long Branch Garland Local Park is a park refresher. Power Line Trailhead at Cabin John Regional Park. Bottle Works Urban Park, which currently is in the first phase. And we have the Adventure Playground at South Germantown Regional Park. We also have projects that are currently in procurement, which amounts to approximately thirteen million. So that's Fox Chapel Local Park, North Branch Trail, Carol Knows Local Park. We have Stonehedge Local Park and the HVAC and ADA projects at the Kneewood Mansion. So as you can see, you know, we do have a lot of projects that are currently in construction. So we do feel that our FY twenty-six implementation numbers will continue that upward trajectory, considering that we have just completed the first quarter of the fiscal year.
Thank you very much, Patrick and Ron. For the record, my name is Andy Frank, and I head up the Park Development Division. And we very appreciate you sitting through this and listening to all this information. We know it was fairly dense. That's why we put together that chart, to help understand what was growing, what was decreasing, and to help facilitate this conversation. So at this time, that's our presentation. And we'd like to open it up to discuss, allow the planning board to discuss the recommended funding scenario that we've provided today and provide us any guidance that you have, questions that you may have, so that you can give us ultimate direction and allow us, as Ron said, to make adjustments in order to prepare for our adoption session, which will occur two weeks from today.
Okay. Great, great. Thank you for your presentation. Very detailed. You always do a great job in, in the what and the why and how. And so let me just start, and then I'll have my other board members also provide their comments. Just a big overview, I, you know, what I realized that this was informed by a lot of engagement, engagement with the, with the community. I personally, the board heard a lot of the community's public testimony about the needs of the parks and what they really thought should happen in there, you know. And so I see that what you presented is corresponding to that. I know it's been a tough couple of years, and I see how you've readjusted your expectations, you know, like the POS, how, you know, we haven't been getting it in a couple of years. And that's why the need to ask for more bonds for that. So I really appreciate that. I know that the park system is huge. It, you know, it's ten percent of all the land of the county, and we have over four hundred parks. And we, it's important to maintain our parks, and that's a lot of the funding you have here maintained. And then there are some pieces on enhancement. I love that you are pushing for the solar initiative, you know, that we, we need to meet our climate action goals of the county, and this is happening, and also it helps us to reduce our, our energy needs and also help reduce our operating expenses because of that. So I'm, I'm very supportive of what you have. I also appreciate Commissioner Peddow, who couldn't be here, had some questions beforehand. And I see it during your presentation, how you talked through some of the questions she had. So I'll leave it at that right now, and I'll let my other board members, Commissioner Peddow and Commissioner Hedrick, provide any comments or questions they may have.
I just, the real comments that I have, sorry. Look, I like, I think with, what the chair had said is sort of where I'm at the, you know, it's good response to what we've heard off in the community. I kind of like to focus on, like you said, the solar, the park refreshers, natural surface trails, things that are, we can, we can do a lot relatively, sort of inexpensively, to really, you know, create as much impact as possible. I think all the things that you've identified here are really good. I'm supportive of the increase. I don't see any things sort of, you know, too much in there that I want to comment on as well. But I think we picked the right sort of projects to go after. I think it's a nice bang for the buck that we're getting for this. And I think it's, I think overall, we've done really well putting this together.
Yeah, I don't have much to add, other than I think it, similarly, it's definitely responsive to both community, what we've heard from community, and also our internal priorities and things that you all have obviously been working on for a long time. It's, you know, hopefully the council does approve the increase in the SAG. That does seem to be a good opportunity to, to put more investment in, you know, certainly Wheaton Regional Park at a minimum, and also the other things that you mentioned, including solar. And I know that, you know, I'm really happy to see solar as such a priority through the energy conservation project. And where's that a PDF? Sorry if I'm getting that wrong. But that, that's, that's exciting. Look forward to talking about that more and having the community learn more about what Parks is planning on the solar front. There's a lot of exciting potential there and a lot of things that I think we can showcase. So it's glad to see a lot more investment there. And other than that, you know, I'm just very thankful to the team for, you know, it's, it's so hard and complicated to distill priorities and community needs down to a budget document. But I think that although this is complicated, it's a lot of different project titles and PDFs and, and, you know, distributing the money over a six-year period. As best I can tell, I think, I think it does square that circle very well. And just thankful to you and the team for, for doing this hard work to, to make sure the investment speaks to the needs, again, that we have internally, the priorities we have internally through PROS, and, and also the community preferences that we've heard over and over. So thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
I did want to bring up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. I just wanted to add one thing and sort of got to miss. I really appreciated the stream protection and stream restoration being in there as well and being a part of the increase. It's one of the areas where I think we, you know, we can invest in more and we have a big impact, but it's not maybe one of the things that gets as much attention, I think, long term. So I, I also appreciated seeing that in there and looking at that as an increase where we spend. So that was also really good. I just wanted to make sure to point that out. I like seeing that in there.
Great, great. And one quick technical question, but more, you talk about legacy urban space. Is that the, could you define what, you know, that category is? Is that the urban parks, or is it, is there something, another type of project?
Yeah, it's Andy Frank again. Legacy Urban Space is one of our acquisition PDFs. So it's growing the system, and it's particularly centered around more the developed areas of the county. It kind of complements the legacy open space program that we have. Urban space focuses on areas that are similar, that correspond to our energized public spaces. So it really focuses on the needs in our more developed areas. But it is an acquisition program that is funded by, substantially by POS. I will note that we will likely have a technical adjustment with where we take the POS funding on the acquisition side. It may ultimately, we may present in two weeks, a combination of legacy urban space and park acquisition based on some technicalities. But both of those are acquisition programs that are well-funded or previously well-funded by Program Open Space and hope to be well-funded again.
Okay, great, great. And thank you again for really thinking this, bringing it to the board early and getting us involved in the process. And you know you have our undivided support. And so we look forward to when you come back, you know, you get it all fleshed out, but this is wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
We would, as part of, while the Geo Committee and the council has already voted on the increase for the one million dollar SAG, we thought it would be appropriate that the board actually acknowledge or, or, or vote on their acceptance of that. I know the timing seems a little bit odd, but we were expecting that you guys might do a vote on that aspect of this.
Yeah, more than happy. So do you like us to devote on approving the additional million dollars for the park bonds? Is that, is that what you're saying? Yeah, okay, great, great. So do I have a motion to approve Park's request for a million-dollar increase in park bonds from eight million to nine million?
So moved. I'll second.
And all in favor? Aye.
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 The ayes have it, three zero. So thank you. Anything else we, you'd like?
No, thank you guys very much. We really appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, thank you so much. And we're going to take a two-minute break and then start with our last item of the day, which is item number seven, Resurvey on Locust Level Preliminary Plan Amendment, Final Forest Conservation Plan Amendment, where staff is recommending approval with conditions on each of those. Thank you so much. Good morning. We're back and we're on item number seven. Resurvey on locust level preliminary plan amendment and forest, final forest conservation plan amendment, where staff is recommending on both of these approval with conditions. This morning, we have Jonathan Casey with the Planning Department presenting this item. Welcome, Mr. Casey.
Thank you. As the chair said, I'm Jonathan Casey with Uptown Planning. This is resurvey on locust level. For you is a preliminary plan amendment as well as a final forest conservation plan amendment. As the chair stated, staff is recommending approval of both of these applications with conditions. The first, the preliminary plan is a request for a validity extension. Basically, the time that the applicant has to record the record plat as well as amending the park conveyance parcel boundary. The forest conservation element is for removal and replacement of existing easement as well as an update to the impervious services plan. Just to get you oriented, subject property is located on the east side of Ridge Road in Germantown, just north of Davis Mill Road. This property is zoned RC. There is a small pocket of RE1 to the north and a good bit of RE2 just to the south, highlighted in golden rod. And then the red, the red stripes is a master plan historic district overlay. As you can see, the subject property is unimproved at the moment. I believe it's in active agriculture. There is a few pockets of forest on the property as well as a stream. Stream is located in the northwest corner of the property. And with that, there's a stream buffer as well as wetlands. Just to briefly talk about the previous approvals. The county council approved a, essentially a water and sewer category change so that this development can utilize public sewer. Subsequently, the board approved preliminary plan for a religious, religious assembly use, which included private daycare, community center and a couple of accessory uses. And then there was also a piece that required one parcel, approximately seven acres, to be conveyed to the Parks Department. And that is located in this green area here, which I'll get into a little bit more in the next slide. And with the preliminary plan under the old organization, the preliminary plan was given, or the forest, final forest conservation plan was given the same preliminary plan. The application before you for forest conservation purposes been given the F-series number, but it is an amendment to the original preliminary plan. As you can see on the image, this was the original forest conservation easement configuration. I just want to note this stormwater outfall and riprap that kind of bisects that area. And all of that area is within that seven acre boundary of, that is going to be dedicated to parks. So finally to the proposal, the applicant is requesting a few things here. One is a approximately two-year extension of the preliminary plan validity period. Essentially, they need a little bit more time to work through the details of the plan, including this forest conservation plan in order to plat the property. With that, there is a reduction of the area of the park parcel, which I'll explain in a minute. And then, as I mentioned, they're removing an existing, pieces of an existing category one easement, that is a recorded easement, and replacing it on-site. And those are primarily due, that's primarily due to stormwater management, outfall movement, which I'll show you shortly. So in the park conveyance parcel, the boundary of the parcel is changing slightly. The purple is the original outline. The tan orange color is the area that's being posed to be essentially removed from that area. But still 6.2 acres will be conveyed to the Parks Department. And this has been coordinated with our, our park staff as well as DPS stormwater. Primarily reason, primary reason for this is a reconfiguration of the stormwater outfalls and kind of utilizing this area down here next to the entrance to make a, essentially a better design for the stormwater. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting extension of the preliminary plan validity period. They have proven that they're, they've essentially had unexpected and unanticipated events beyond their control that have essentially delayed them in this process. There's been a lot of coordination with agencies as well as the, you know, COVID pandemic does have lingering effects with timelines, costs, et cetera. I've outlined all of those reasons in the staff report. And the applicant is requesting a very, it's a reasonable extension of the validity period, which could give them till March 4th of 2027 to plat the property. So this lovely graphic here shows you exactly what's going on with the forest conservation element of the plan. This is the existing boundary as I described. A portion of the, the park parcel is being reduced. That also, the forest conservation element is also being changed there. So they'll be removing 0.44 acres of existing easement and then relocating it over here to the east as well as removing this spatula-shaped portion where there was an outfall. So now they have a contiguous park parcel as well as contiguous forest conservation easement. I think this graphic is pretty self-explanatory as far as the details of the forest conservation plan go. This amendment does result in fewer trees being removed at the onset as well as it does generate additional reforestation on the property. And as I mentioned, there is an impervious surface plan that is tied to the water and sewer category change. There was condition requiring the applicant to essentially limit their imperviousness to no more than 20%. There is about a 1% increase with this application due to changes on the driveway configuration, but ultimately they are still well below the 20% cap. So these, these are the revised conditions for the preliminary plan. Most of them are wordsmithing. The important part is this 6.2 acre piece as well as the changed condition 14, which identifies the new validity period for the preliminary plan. And that concludes my presentation. I believe we have a speaker?
Yes, there's one person signed up for public testimony, James Bennett, an adjacent property owner. Welcome, Mr. Bennett. You have three minutes for your presentation.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My wife and I own 23401 Ridge Road, which is circled on the map here. And I actually mow the trails around the property to help out the temples. They use it for various things. So we've become pretty familiar with this area since 2019 when we, when we bought our house. And we have two big concerns. The first is that we preserve as many of the existing trees as we can, which it sounds like we are, so that's great. And the second is where the entrance and the driveway are, are really not in a good place. So we had a suggestion about that. So next slide. The first is the, that field, those trees in the field are home to a ton of different kinds of animals. We've got everything from bats to groundhogs. So we're happy to see that, that forest area can be maintained as much as we can. Next slide. And the next thing is because we're in a historic district, just the sightlines of the area. We have planted some trees, but if you look at the next slide, the, some of the events on Sunday, I think that are groundbreaking, were easily visible from this historic district. So as many trees as we can keep and replant, the better, I think, for the historic district. Next slide. A larger concern is, like I said, the, the entrance is not in a great place. Our section of Ridge Road is at the bottom of a steep hill coming south from Damascus. And drivers regularly move through there at 50 miles an hour or more and frequently pass on the right shoulder when people are turning left, which is a recipe for disaster. Next slide. Especially because this is basically one giant uncontrolled intersection. The Cedar Grove Store, which is part of the historic district and a gas station, has a parking lot that fronts that entire piece of Ridge Road and cars come out of there at all different angles. This is two cars leaving at the same time going opposite directions, which leads to a wreck happening in this area every few weeks, including, next slide. This is a wreck that happened on Monday, right in that area. So if you look where the, where the white SUV is next to the police cars on the right side of the picture. Next slide. That is basically where the entrance is. That's the proposed entrance. Next slide. And that's where that, that's basically where the SUV ended up. So next slide. Then if you look at the, where the driveway goes, that area that's highlighted is a very steep hill. Next slide. It's basically, it's been a sled hill for generations and I think it'll be virtually impassable in snow and ice. We're very worried about people trying to descend. and ice. We're very worried about people trying to descend the hill and ending up in the creek at the bottom of the property. So if you look at the next slide, we think it would make a lot more sense to negotiate with the Baptist Church there, Upper Seneca Baptist Church, which is at 23401 Davis Mill, and make the entrance to their back parking lot. There's actually already a mowed trail, if you, where that red line is, right along the fence line of the adjacent property. Next slide. That's where the entrance could be, right between those two trees. That wouldn't take more than two parking lots away from the church. And we've heard just from informal talks around the neighborhood that the, the church would be open to negotiating something with the developers. They already share that building with several other congregations. Next slide. As you can see in this picture and that picture, this ground is much flatter, already has a well-worn roadbed. And notably, that's how all the big trucks access the property on, to set up for the Sunday event. It's the logical place to drive up to that area.
Could you wrap up your presentations?
Yeah, I'm done. That's all. Thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, appreciated. I guess the applicant, applicant's online. And one of the things that, could someone address some of the comments that the Mr. Bennett brought up about access? And I would think that when the site, the MCDOT, then that they, I'm sure they reviewed this and where the driveway entrances and things like that. But can, can the applicant speak now and provide some comments, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. For the record, this is Bob Harris with Lurcher and Brewer, representing the applicant. I was the attorney who handled the original approvals as well. And I've dealt with Mr. Bennett before. We've had a good relationship. I will say I'm surprised to hear his comments today, but I want to be respectful to him. The, what I would say is that the issue of the driveway access was studied exhaustively in the original approval. State Highway Administration, Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Park and Planning Staff, and Department of Fire and Rescue Services all examined it and determined that the access point was appropriate. And that was what the planning board approved. Today's amendment does not change anything there. And so we believe those conclusions were as sound or are as sound today as they were when it was first proposed. The, you know, I just think it's, you know, unreasonable to assume that we would provide access to this property through somebody else's property, through a parking lot, no less. Again, I want to respect Mr. Bennett's interests here, but I just don't see how that can be accommodated. And I think we're entitled to rely on the approval that we got and that you, the planning board, approved.
Okay, great. No other questions or comments from the applicant or their attorney? Hearing, hearing none. I am in favor of this project in terms of the request to, for the preliminary plan amendment and for increasing the preliminary plan validity period. I, one of the questions I did have, it sounds like, is the church property under construction yet or no? I, it was implied that I, maybe through Mr. Bennett, I thought something was under construction, but it's not, correct?
I'm going to rely on the applicant, but I believe that was just a groundbreaking, like a celebration that they're moving forward, not a true groundbreaking.
Okay, great, great. Yes, I'm, so I'm in favor of this request to, to increase the extension on the validity period for two years and to, for the requested forest, final forest conservation amendment. I'm looking forward to the project moving forward. I have no other comments or questions. And other, other than, in general, I see that it's interesting that the parking lots are, you know, that's half of the impervious material there. I was asking, the planning in general. When someone has impervious, I mean, like pervious pavers and stuff, or things like that, is that a one for one, just out of curiosity for, on the imperviousness piece, or it's, it's, do you get any credit for it, just out of curiosity? No credit for it?
No, not for planning department purposes.
Okay, okay, great, great. Those are the, all the questions I have. Any other questions or comments from my planning board members?
None for me. I understand the concerns about the entrance and exits, but I drive that fairly frequently. My in-laws live over there. I think it should be fine. And I don't think we can condition rerouting an exit or entrance to another property. So I think this is fine, support the extension of the amendment.
Yeah, no, no comments on my end. I support the amendment.
Okay, great. So do I have a motion to, is it one for each? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resurvey on locust level preliminary plan amendment number 1202004A where staff is recommending approval with conditions? And that, one of those conditions is extension of the preliminary plan validity period for two years?
Yeah. Move for the resurvey and extension. Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's three zero. And do I have a motion for approval of the final forest conservation plan amendment, F20250370?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the final forest conservation.
With conditions?
With conditions, of course.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, three zero. Thank you, thank you. Also, thank you, Mr. Bennett, for your presentation. And we look forward for the project moving forward. And this ends our planning board meeting for October 2nd. We will see everyone next Thursday. Thank you.